I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
The street, the discussion on the street policy, why was that switched?
That was taken off because I knew that Fred Nouse could not be here tonight, and he has been chairman of our sidewalk committee and very active on that committee, so he asked if we could have that next time. So we're going to have that the third meeting of the month, I mean, the third Wednesday of the month. So that's why it was taken off.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Second by Kathy. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Everybody okay?
Susan, just a point of information. So, I guess I'd like clarification. If we knew we weren't going to be at a meeting and there was a topic that we were particularly interested in, we could ask for that topic to be moved to a different day?
Sure. If you know that there's something that you really want to discuss and there's no time element, I don't believe there's any time element there, sure, be happy to do that, whatever you would like.
Alright, thank you.
Just let me know. And if you want to add anything, you certainly can let me know that too. Which I think you did with the Chatham Health District and also with the long-range cap.
Yes.
Approval of minutes for September 21, 2016?
Summled.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Brian. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. I don't have anything other than, under communications, I have brought with me Bruce Chadwick has reviewed and Carrie Olson has reviewed an explanatory text of the referendum question for November 8, 2016, and I have it here tonight, and there's a chart that talks a little bit about the impact to a typical taxpayer for the additional debt service. It's a projected debt service impact graph, so help yourself to these. We will be distributing them in various offices, including town clerk and my office, and then we're also going to be putting them in the River East as an insert, so people will be able to have as much information as is appropriate.
Susan, will they be going home with the schoolchildren?
I hadn't planned on that. Any other questions on that?
On this one here, it looks like they modified and didn't specifically put any specific road in there for the two and a half million. That's great. So, fantastic.
Yeah, it went through a few iterations.
That's great. I think it makes it better anyway.
Public comments? Any public comment tonight? Yes, Luke?
Luke Parrott, 227 Williams Street. Good evening. First, I want to express my thanks for the time and effort that you put in as board members for that office and keeping in mind the best interest of all the people in Portland. However, I'm disappointed in the direction you took in reference to the Elmcrest plan. I was planning to speak at the last meeting. I was planning to speak at the last meeting, but after Elwin spoke on behalf of your appointed Economic Development Commission, and then Mary Dickinson explaining how developers need to work, my comments paled in comparison. My hope is that there is still a developer who is out there who would like to negotiate with you to rehabilitate the three buildings, or at least two of them, on the Elmcrest campus so that the blighted property can be fixed, can be used, so that people in town can take advantage of a beautiful, complex, brain-ured place, or whatever we want to call it, for the people. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Also? Okay. We'll move on to just a notification. We had a citizen of our town, Luke Pellon, who became an Eagle Scout, and there was a really very nice ceremony for him at First Church last Sunday. I was able to attend, and as our tradition, I'm sharing with you, Luke's certificate of congratulations sent on your behalf, the Board of Selectmen, on his achievement of the Eagle Scout Court of Honor Award, which is the highest rank attainable in the Boy Scouting Program, and it's for his outstanding work performance, his dedication, and unselfish service as a member of the Portland Troop Number Two Boy Scouts of America. Luke's leadership service project provided him the opportunity to demonstrate ability to lead others while performing a project for the benefit of the community. His project was dedicated to his church, the first congregational church in Portland, and it involved painting the large hallway for the nursery school for the church, and he also had another activity that he performed, which was a supper at St. Vincent de Paul Place, and the projects that he performed were very time-consuming from both planning and labor standpoint, and it certainly achieved great success and appreciation by all, and it was presented on the second day of October in the year 2016, and we wish to congratulate Luke on his hard work, and it was really, as I said, a very, very nice ceremony for We have a guest tonight on number eight, Camp Director Ben Silman from Camp Phelps-Ingersoll. Delighted to have you here tonight, Ben, and you're here to request some assistance with the driveway that leads from Route 66 into the camp. So I invite you up to give us a synopsis.
Susan, if I may put one thing on the record, in the summer, my, one of my children, and I'm sure more in the future, have had Ben at Camp Ingersoll, and I don't believe that will affect how I vote in any way.
I'll tell you that I've walked there, and I use the park.
Do I have to say my grandchildren too?
I don't know.
It better get to the phone directory.
I don't feel I need to, but we love your park, I will confess.
Susan, I need to disclose that my grandchild went to Camp Ingersoll, and I need to disclose as well that I work with Ben at YMCA.
Sure. Thank you.
Hello. I'm Ben Silman. I'm the Youth and Camp Director at the Middlesex YMCA. Thank you very much for taking the time to listen to me tonight. The YMCA, Camp Ingersoll, is located in Portland. We have about 74 acres that we hold day camp and other activities on the campground. Really, as a nonprofit, we're trying to offer programs which enhance and enrich the lives of our community. So this summer, we had around 650 kids on camp every day. We gave around $150,000 away in financial assistance, because we're always trying to get kids and involvement in our community. With that, we help partner with, or helping, we partner with Park and Rec. They have their soccer club at Camp Ingersoll, Park and Rec Soccer, Soccer Club. We've done some of the Young Hikers stuff at camp. Portland Cross Country holds invitationals there as well. So we have an issue with our road, our entrance road, right now, that is in need of repair. We have potholes that are forming that are just wearing down. We refill them periodically, but they are still a hindrance to coming in and out of the camp property. Our contract with the town is now going to the year 2019, as of right now, and we like to work with the town as much as we can. We feel, though, that right now in this partnership, we would like to have assistance in helping to repair some of those potholes on that road. We do use it primarily alone in the summer. The rest of the two, the two months that were in operation, or the two seasons that were in operation, spring and fall, are used primarily by Portland Soccer Club and those activities from the town. It does say in our contract that it will help repair anything that is damaged, not saying that all the town traffic is itself solely responsible for damaging the road, but we're just asking for assistance in repairing those potholes.
Open that up for discussion.
When you say assistance, do you mean financially, or just have us fix the potholes?
Both, I think, yes.
It's just repair the potholes, not resurface the driveway?
Yes, I think as, right now, in terms of financially, I don't, we are not in a position to do that, and I don't think we really expect the town to repave the entire driveway.
I know that Rick went out and did a little research, so, Rick, did you want to make some comments?
Yeah. Rick, I'm the director of the local office. I, for the number of trips out here, I like the sound of it. Poor problem, it's breaking up. I just did a very rough estimate of material costs. Section repaired, one path, there's a good section cut in.
Yeah.
You're looking at probably five to $6,000 worth of asphalt. We certainly can put it down. I think we've got to do a little more than just the prep. Because you're going to lose, you've got some base issues without getting too technical, but I think we could certainly, and we'd be glad, I would be glad to, in a couple days with the two, the paving box, if we can find the money for the asphalt, if all, I don't know if the boys would like it, but that's kind of, what that'll do is, it would be an overlay, a lot of each overlay on the bad sections, about $600, $700.
Yeah.
It'll hold it probably for a little while, you know, for a couple of years, but you need to, there's some base issues and stuff, or get ultimately, a little more than that.
I think for the amount of use that the town, you know, uses that, it's a real lot, that that's a minor amount of money for us to, I mean, I don't know where we get that money, I don't know how that would work, but we should think about contributing.
It would probably be either contingency or some other, I don't know that Parks and Rec has that kind of money, and it's not a park and, let me think about this. Is it the soccer club that uses it too, Chris?
Soccer club uses it, yeah.
Soccer club, Susan, right.
Susan.
And there's hundreds of children that go there, right?
Three hundred and fifty, three hundred and seventy-five.
Ben?
On, without getting into every detail of the contract, do we pay anything, or is it?
No, we don't pay.
Okay.
Yeah, it's maintain the fields and use them.
Right, no cash.
No, yeah.
It's in kind, and I, I know that it's been, I think since before I became First Selectman, so I think it's before 2003.
Yeah, I would say, I can't.
It's been, it's way before your time here, Ben.
Have we, have we spent money doing anything with them in that time at all? So this will be the first time they've come to us and said, spend more money?
I don't know of any, other than the mowing and the repair, if there needs to be repair at the soccer fields.
Yeah.
There's significant money on repair, if you were to try on it, it wouldn't have money, it wouldn't have a lot.
There has been damage.
Yeah.
But that's not their fault.
Oh, that's part of the time, dedicated time maintaining that field. It was definitely considerable time enough to go into it, and that's, you know, that contract is speaking to the field, not to the driveway. It's just a field that was destroyed, that we're supposed to handle. I think it was.
I believe the contract does, it does talk about other parcels of land, but really, it's just, you know, that we work well with the town, and we want to continue that relationship, and we both use it, so.
I move that the town provide up to $6,000, and continue to see for materials to repair the driveway, and that the town provide the services to install that.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion? Wait, one minute.
I like the idea.
Thank you.
I like the idea based on, I think you said we have three more years of the contract, it's about $2,000 more dollars per year that we're going to use, and obviously, we've already used it to pass, so if you find the length of the contract, it would obviously be much better, but even just saying the next three years, it's about $2,000 a year to make sure the driveway is passable for our use, I'm okay with it.
If it's going to last.
I like.
Depends on weather, I know that.
And I like, I like the fact that this isn't just filling in potholes. I think Rick brings up a good point to do what he suggested. I like that idea.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? One abstention. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Alright, thank you, Ben. Alright, let's see. Number nine. Update on the Policy on Long Range Capital Improvements Commission, and I know at least, if I'm not mistaken, one member is here, Chris, I think you're the only member. What we did, Chris, is we put together pretty much what's already in the, I'm going to give you a packet here. Hold on. There it is. I think it's the golden rod, if I'm not mistaken. It's in our charter that tells us what we're supposed to do as far as long-range capital. Improvements Commission shall be appointed pursuant to Section 804 of the Charter, shall review proposed capital expenditures for projects, including water and sewer, and shall submit its recommendations to the First Selectmen in accordance with Section 1202 of the Charter, and the recommendations, excuse me, shall be based upon, but not necessarily limited to the following considerations: the extent to which the proposed expenditure is needed, what alternatives to proceeding with the proposed expenditure exist, the soundness of the proposal in terms of the need to be fulfilled, and the likely consequences of the cost of the proposed expenditures on the town's financial position and mill rate. And the commission's report to the First Selectmen shall be deemed advisory in nature and shall be a matter of public record. So we talked about reviewing the mission of the commission, as well as any other items you might want to consider. So I'll open it up for your dialogue. Yes.
One of the first questions I have is that, do we have, and I see it in front of me, but I do not have my right glasses on. Do we have a line each year in the budget for long-term capital improvement, and has that line been funded each year?
What we have, Ketch, within the budget, and I.
Did you have it in large print?
I don't know that I have it in large print tonight.
You could do better than that.
But as part of the annual budget, there is a long-range capital portion of the budget, and in there, as is required by LoSIP, which is the Local Capital Improvement Planning Program that the state funds, we must have a five-year capital plan, and as they give us funds under LoSIP, you are supposed to have something within your plan in order to qualify to use LoSIP. Some towns may have a 10-year plan. We typically follow a five-year plan, and as has been the tradition for a while. Thanks, Kathy. The first year is the one that would be contemplated and calculated within the budget. So that first year of the five-year, you would fund by way of either the general fund or by grants, by LoSIP, and we get transfers into that budget as well from the various other funds, if it's available, like water and sewer, they transfer into the long-range capital improvement. And I thought I passed it out the last time that we met a copy of the current years. Is it in the, I don't think it's in your general fund report, I don't know if it's in there, but I will look for it as you, as you talk. I forgot, Ketch.
I think it's you, Ronnie. I think it's your radio.
Ronnie's off.
You look awful guilty.
So then I guess my second question, in addition to grants or monies from the general fund and LoSIP, have we, as a town, spent any monies in the last few years?
We spend money on capital every year, yes.
Do we spend that money in regard to the, to the information that is supplied to us by Charter, knowing full well that we need to look at alternatives and the soundness of the approval? I'm asking these questions, and I guess they're relatively pointed, because we've had before us recently an immediate need, a lot, and some of the, some of the areas appear to probably have had a long history of need, and maybe not immediate, but now to the point where it is immediate. So I'm wondering, and maybe you can help me with this, I'm wondering, how did we get to this point with some of the infrastructure issues?
Well, I think you can ask the entire board, because.
I can, okay.
Yeah, which you are, because during the budget workshops that we have annually, we review all aspects of the budget, including long-range capital budget, and it is certainly the charge of the Selectmen to determine if they want to fund everything that's in a capital budget, or determine how, as is stated in the Charter, the impact that it will have on the spending and the mill rate as well. I mean, the session we had most recently was done outside of the budget season, and what happens every year is the various departments submit information to my office, and we look at the various needs that we have, and also look at the costs associated with the various requests, and also, we try very hard to look at any grants that we can get to defray those costs. So when the board meets, and we'll be going through this very soon in March, you can review any and all information, and if you choose to put one, two, three, four mills, whatever it might be, I mean, that's what this board is charged with in terms of putting out the budget. The more recent work that we've been doing in terms of the bond authorization is not something this board has done, and one of the reasons we're looking at it now is because, and we've talked about this, so I'm afraid of repeating myself, but as you look at the handout, you can see that the blue represents the current debt service that a typical person would be paying as part of their total tax bill, and the orange represents what the new, should the bond referendum pass, what that new piece would be. And you can see, as you look at these charts, and you have one, and there's some up here, the current debt service is going to decrease substantially on or about 2020. And then you can see that the orange dips below what we're paying this year in the third year out, so 2017, 2018, I think that represents about a, year over year, about a six or seven dollar increase, and then in year 2019, year over year, from 18 to 19, it's again about a seven dollar increase. I'm going from memory now, but I think from 19 to 20, there's about a $34 dip. So the actual amount that this particular taxpayer would pay for debt service would dip at that time. And then you can see in year 2023, there's a substantial dip of about, it looks like almost $100,000, if you just take your eye and look at it. So as we try to accommodate capital and other infrastructure improvements, our financial advisor and our finance office and this board tries to, what I would suggest is as you go forward, that maybe you want it a little bit less than it is now, or maybe you want it about the same, and that's when you can really begin to see some potential improvements in your planning for capital improvements. But getting back to your question, I do, I'm not sure I have the current years with me, but I certainly have some of the other long-range capital plans, just to give you an example, Ketch, and show it to you. But it's in the back of your budget book? Did we give you a budget when you came?
Yes.
Go to the back of the book. Here's an example. Thank you. That's from years back. Thank you. One of the suggestions has been that the town could allocate a certain amount of money every year, or a certain amount of a mill every year, and that's something that's been talked about for a long time, but boards of selectmen haven't always adhered to that.
So it has come up as a possibility for us to be able to put aside some money on an annual basis, but we haven't done it because.
We, we, again, I'm not, I'm not, I'm speaking for the entire board.
Right, yeah.
This is not, you're asking me, but others want to answer, they can't.
Okay, okay, so I'm asking everybody, anybody can chime in.
It's funded in the first year, and then it's planned for the next year, and the next year, and the next year.
Okay, so, so part of my asking these questions has to do with, with Rick coming forward more than once and saying that we don't have the money, we can't do A, B, or C. So then giving us a new, a new and improved list that clearly delineates immediate needs, and, and although we're going out to referendum and it will, I'm guessing it will pass, and we will then have some money to spend, it doesn't come close to even approaching the, what has been documented as immediate needs. And so then, I guess what I'm hearing, and please, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, is that our only other option would be to raise taxes considerably in order to be able to, to accommodate the immediate needs? I'm asking everyone.
Sure.
I just want to make sure I'm understanding this right, so.
To raise about, and I'm just giving you a ballpark, about $800,000 is a mill.
Is a mill, mm-hmm.
Yes. So if you want to spend 2.4 million, you can raise the mill rate three mills, so you can raise 2.4 million. I'm just giving an example of how revenue could be generated.
Okay.
Now, there are some accounts, and this is a question that we can answer and get into more depth. Within the various accounts, there are some residual dollars, and there's residual dollars in some line items that haven't been spent, and this board can suggest that those residual dollars be redistributed.
Uh-huh.
Now, this board could also contemplate just saying, you want $800,000 every year to go toward capital, whether or not you have to actually put it in the various areas, I suppose. Tom, is there a miscellaneous, or can, do you have to?
You need to picture, you do have a capital one.
Okay.
So if you have to bond it, there's at least a five-year capital one. That's why we have that. To do anything with LoSIP, you have to be included within your five-year capital plan, and that's what we do, and those components, and then there are those, the funds that are carried over, the majority of those are things where the projects that you keep refunding, so those are there, or there's money, or when we did go out to bid, there wasn't enough money, we go into it, so we'll wait for the next time the money go into the pot.
So I think we've, I don't think this is 100% accurate, but I think generally, we've had more of a reactive response to things as opposed to proactive. I think that we need to change our policy where Long Range Capital Commission is doing the dirty work really in identifying what the needs are. the dirty work really in identifying what the needs are and projecting what the needs are. And I don't think it's necessarily helpful for it just to be five years. And I don't know how far out it should go, but pick a building that you think is going to need to be replaced in however many years down the road, and you should plan for it. So I think it should all be laid out. I think generally speaking, you want to, your expenditure should be sort of balanced out over that period of time. One person shouldn't take a hit in year one, and somebody doesn't do it in year three. I just think that's, it's a, to me, it's somewhat simple. I think the Long Range Commission, I think we need to ask them to get, I guess it's just a little more in-depth and identify everything for a certain period of time. I don't know how long that is. I suppose the longest, whatever asset, however long it's going to take where it needs to be replaced, and it needs to be identified and modified as time goes on.
And I think Carl was our liaison. Traditionally, there's one selectman that goes to all of the Long Range Capital Commission meetings and tries to get a better understanding so that when the selectmen meet during the budget season, there's an opportunity for that person to give us some of that in-depth information.
Because we need it, because I will tell you that I have no idea how many cars you need, or how much, you know, you need to pay, I mean, if it's completely lost, then I have to rely on people to tell me what that is. So I don't know what it is, and I don't think anybody in the board really knows.
And I guess, thanks, Brian, because that's very helpful. I think, you know, I think that the Long Range Capital Commission has done a great job. I've seen the frustration amongst the members, I've seen Rick's frustration. So I think that we do need to do a plan that's longer than five years. And I think when we fund anything, we have to be true to that funding and make sure we have follow-up and follow-through. I'm willing to take Carl's seat there, if that would be your desire. But the piece that I'm going to ask you about, Brian, is that it sounded like you thought we didn't always have enough information, so that the numbers that we get and the expression of the need, it's immediacy. What more do we need than that?
You can get more, any information you want will get you.
Yeah, I'm not criticizing anybody. I just think the plan just, I just think the more information you have, and the more quality information you have over an extended period of time, it's just more helpful to do that. Now, there's, you know, there's going to be different people on the board, and sometimes people feel politically drawn one way or another, you know, when they make decisions. So I can imagine sometime down the road, that's going to influence people. I know that, you know, in the past, with the recession we had, we were very careful about that, because you have to be, you know, aware of that, and how that was going to affect people during that timeframe. So I think that there was less money spent during that timeframe, but...
Understood.
Yeah, in 2004 and 2005, the town issued bonds for the secondary schools, so that was 1.4, let's see, that was nine million the first year, and I think a little over eight million the second.
So this, I don't think is reality.
Right, because we're...
I think what's going to happen is, you want to balance it out really across the board with what you're doing.
Right, right. But this is to illustrate what's on the record.
No, I understand, but things are going to come into play.
Yes.
Right, so this is, this, by election day, is probably going to be an obsolete piece of...
No, it will not be obsolete.
I think it's accurate as of today.
As of today?
Yes.
As of this moment? But then depending on what happens after election day?
Future, well, no.
This includes...
No.
Go ahead.
Let me, let me explain it. This blue is what we're committed to for debt service today.
Uh-huh, this is, this is current debt service.
Yes.
Yes, they didn't do stuff.
So if the referendum passes, then you're going to incur a little more each year for two years. So year-over-year, 17 to 18, it's about six or seven dollars. And then year-over-year, 18 to 19, it's another six dollars for the entire year.
Okay.
Okay, then, in the year-over-year, the next year, as I said, it's about a $34 drop. Then I think the next year, it's a $2 increase. And then there's another drop, and I don't have those figures right in front of me. But it is accurate, because in November, when you take a look at what this impact would be, that's what the impact is.
Oh, okay, thank you.
The only difference is, say, for instance, in 2020, you may decide to have another project.
Right.
So that's why it's accurate, but things are going to change.
And I thought this was very illustrative, because it shows you how you can begin to meet out your debt service. And you can determine for the typical taxpayer of $150,000 assessment, they're paying about $440 right now out of their entire tax bill. And their entire tax bill is 32.51 times 150. So that's how you figure out what your entire tax bill is. And then, you know, in terms of the amount that that taxpayer is paying toward debt service, that's the 400 dollars.
And just for the record, this is based on the October 1st grant list, and obviously the grant list can change a little bit, the numbers can change a little bit.
Well, yeah, you have to have some base until we're using the current information.
No, 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 yeah, yeah. Another point.
I just, I don't want the audience to think that this is inaccurate. You said it would be inaccurate in November, and it is not correct.
It will be, it will be accurate in November.
It's accurate today, yes. But, to your point, based on whatever the selectmen determine in March, and then in April, and then everybody votes on their budget in May, we'll determine how that paragraph may or may not change.
And how much we spend out of, what is to be, out of the 10 million. So in other words, if we don't spend the 10 million...
Good point.
So...
Right, Tom?
Right, Tom? This is based on if we spent the entire 10 million.
Spent it all, yeah.
I would assume, I would hope.
Well, aren't there, are there two issuances, Tom? Predicted? Three, I'm sorry, I'm getting three different answers.
Are they assuming 10 million all at once?
No, 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 no. We all saw how they were allocated, but it's still spending the 10 million. I understand they come in at different points, but it's still, thank you, Tom.
I think after a budget season, you begin to understand it a little better. And after the 10th or 13th budget, you understand it a little better again, so... I mean, there's a, there's a lot of needs, obviously, and there always will be. And I didn't bring it tonight, because I haven't finished it yet, but I am working on a compilation, so that you can see some of the projects that we have worked on. I know that finance and some of the departments have put together over the years the various improvements that they made, like the roof was done on this building, the roof was done on the Buck Foreman Building, the roof was done on the senior center. A few years ago, we did work on the clock tower of the town hall, and I'm going to put that together so that you'll have a timeline from 2003 forward. So you can kind of look at some of the different things that we have done, in light of the things that now, again, need to be done. So I think that might be helpful.
Is this a joint meeting?
Yes. Chris can speak.
Chris, do you, I mean, I'm just, I'm just telling you my thoughts. I mean, does that make sense to you guys?
No, I agree. So I can't blame the commission after the process, but again, I think everyone on the commission is somewhat frustrated because of what's done after the budget season, once we've put everything together. And my understanding is, the commission hadn't met for a number of year, months. There's a long period of time of no activity on that goose park. I agree, it needs to be proactive. I think it's great coming up with a plan, but I think, and I guess, I'm not sure where you were coming up with anything, but I think there needs to be some kind of willingness on the board to want to put together a plan where you're going to pre-fund or allocate money. So again, you said one mill is 800,000, but, you know, are we setting aside a certain dollar amount so that when the commission comes up with this, this capital plan for five years, 10 years, whatever it happens to be, there's money that we could actually start chipping away at things on an ongoing basis, other than, here's a report, here's a plan, there's no mechanism to fund it yet. So I guess I was kind of thinking, part of your policy was going to be that you're going to agree to set aside, or during your budget process, we're going to allocate money to Long Range Capital, or at the same time, I don't, you know, again, I don't know if there's another one, where you allocate money to land acquisition, you know, Long Range Land acquisitions or things. So again, that, that's where I think, I thought you were going with that, and I thought that's what we talked about during the meeting when you said let's re-meet in October, September, October, to talk about a policy.
Yeah, and certainly as we go through deliberations, and many of us have been through several, what it gets down to is, how much do you want to ask people to pay? I mean, it's in terms of the, trying to balance the needs with the ability to pay. And that's always what, what budgets are about. So as the debt service decreases, that's very beneficial to us, provided something else doesn't come along that, that we have to pay. And some of the mitigating factors now are that the reduction in state aid is always a shadow over us. So with having a set amount of education cost sharing, a set amount of town aid road money, a set amount of revenue sharing money, and having that questioned, whether or not it's shifting, whether or not it's decreasing, because for many years, it was somewhat increasing. Education cost sharing did go up at one point. There were some other revenue dollars that came in outside of regular grant programs during the Americans for Recovery and whatever it was, ARR, A, whatever that was, AR. So you have to keep a close eye on what Hartford is doing, a close eye on what the federal government does, because there's some dollars particularly for education that come in. And I can tell you from, I know some of you are hopefully planning to come to the CCM meeting this year, there's a real concern as to how the state funding will be administered. And the recent court ruling in terms of the justice and education funding, which said that while there may be adequate education funding given by the state, it's inadequate in its distribution. And some of the translation of that may be that the larger cities, do they get enough to care for their education and the results necessary? Do small towns, do mid-sized towns? So there's a lot of moving parts, and when you put together a budget, if you're getting your revenue and it's pretty good coming from the state, that certainly helps you in terms of the ability to raise revenue at the local level. If your grant list is growing, that's very helpful. Grant lists haven't been growing immeasurably. Their, ours has gone up somewhat. We're in a reval year right now, so depending on what the revaluation company finds, the grant list could go down, the grant list could go up. And I'm sure you read about some other towns in their recent revaluations, the valuations have gone down in some aspects, and other aspects, they go up. Sometimes commercial goes up, sometimes residential goes down, and so forth. And believe it or not, there's some years where people buy a lot of new cars. But the state legislature and the governor say, well, we're going to take away the car tax. Well, if you take away the car tax, and your mill rate isn't over 32, or when they looked at the standard, which is supposed, was 32, then they were going to pay you more. But if you raised your mill rate a little higher than 32, so that when they're giving you the grant, you're not going to get that. And when they actually came out with what the number was for the, for some of that, they were going to say it was 37, not 32. So they were trying to establish a maximum rate for everybody in the state in terms of their car tax, and it was 32, and then they raised it to 37, because that meant they wouldn't have to reimburse you as much, because less towns have, you know, rated 37. So I'll stop now, but I couldn't go on.
So, Chris, Chris brought up a question for me then. So, Chris and I, I don't want to put you on the spot, why did you stop meeting?
Well, on that, I don't know.
Okay.
I was appointed in July this year, so...
Okay.
Previously, I had no idea what their schedule was. I was under the impression, talking to Mike Agalotti, that they were dormant for a while in terms of how they got together. And I don't know if that's because internal budgeting process changed on how you do that, or if it just became a secondary commission that just didn't matter until it came time to talk about, hey, now we have a lot of funding to come up with, let's, let's get together and prioritize all the needs once.
And I think that, and I know that many times the Long Range Capital was getting very frustrated, because they put forward requests for millions of dollars, and then when the Board of Selectmen deliberated, they can always raise the budget that the first selectman's office puts out, and there hasn't been an appetite for increasing mill rates above, we've hovered around a half a mill or less. Sometimes it's a little bit more. But to get substantial increases, particularly for capital, unless you're getting a huge increase in your grant list, you have to raise, you have to raise taxes.
And, and, okay, so I appreciate that as a taxpayer. So, Brian, you talked about the recession. I get that we're trying to balance our budget to, to keep it as lean as possible for the benefit of taxpayers, and that's, that's great. But at the same time, we also talked about, we need to be proactive, so we're not hit with, again, I don't know, I can't remember the exact numbers that was on that list, but it was 33-plus million dollars, I think, if you looked at everything that was on that list, if you retain it. So...
And you could probably even add to that, Chris, you know?
I'm sure we can, because I think there's stuff that probably wasn't captured, you know? But, but I think it's a matter of, how do we become proactive, so that we know there's additional things every year that are going to happen? We're probably not going to come up with a bond of 10 million dollars every five years to fund everything we need to do. So how do we start coming up with a proactive approach, so we have the finances to do some of these things? You know, when there's a need for a new firehouse, when there's a need for the new breathable apparatuses for the firemen, when, when there's condensers for roofs, I know part of that's in, in this process. When there's, there's capital needs, I think we just need to come up with a policy, or you guys do with a policy, that we're proactively trying to set aside money for those types of things, because the list is just going to grow and grow.
Yeah, and, and again, the balancing act is, you know, the property tax is based on the grant list. And if your grant list is growing, that's of great assistance to you. If the grant list is stagnant or reducing, that becomes a difficult situation. You know, so that's why we're always trying to look at how we can improve our grant list, because that's the nature of property taxes. And property taxes, as you know, are regressive. They're not based on people's income, they're based on the house. So even if their income has reduced, and that's the case very often for people who are retired and elderly or disabled, it becomes very difficult for them in terms of paying for their taxes. So there, there's a great balancing act, but, you know, discipline is important, obviously, by this board, and I think that the boards of selectmen have been very cognizant of people's needs, as well as our services that we're trying to provide. Because don't forget, it's not just capital improvement, there's a lot of services that the town gets under the, under the taxes that they pay, from education, to this library, to public works, to police, fire department, and so forth and so on. And so it's also a balancing act as to how many services you want to provide. If you, if you reduce services, you can use some of that money to put towards something else. So budgeting is, is a very fun activity when you have a lot of money. It's hard, very hard.
So anyways, I think step number one is a comprehensive plan. I think that it comes down to whoever sits on the Board of Selectmen to assess that plan, assess what the needs are. There's different definitions of needs and requirements, I think. But you have to assess what the real needs are, and then step three is really funding, and how that gets me in.
And I think we start...
But I do think step one is giving the information.
I agree, and I think we start with the five-year capital plan that's in your budgets. And I think you will find that they're pretty comprehensive. They're not funded. They're only funded for that first year. So the challenge to the board is how you fund your two, three, four, five, and so forth. And knowing if you have a 10-year plan, you don't know what the economy is doing, obviously. So right now, we know that the interest rates are low. We know that our debt service is decreasing. That's why we're putting out a bond this year, and we didn't put one out in previous years, because it wouldn't have been a good time. So that's why people are encouraged to study very carefully the question that they'll be asked to vote on, because it will help us in terms of some of the catch-up that I think we're beginning to talk about here, from the years that we weren't funding things. And many towns, I sit on the inter-local committee with Middletown, they have a subcommittee, I believe, of their selectmen that look at capital improvements. And they have a question on the ballot, at least one, the councilman that sits with me thought that was two, but one, is for a little over 12 million dollars to pay for improvements to their radio system for a police and fire. And that is going to hit us probably in another year or two, if that passes, about a couple hundred thousand dollars for us in terms of improvements to our radio systems, because we have to match up with Middletown, because there are dispatch services. They and other medium and larger-sized towns, if you look at their budgets, they do go out to bond more frequently than small towns. And there's obvious reasons for that. I mean, there's, there's just a different way of budgeting, and their ability to pay is different, and so on. And it's also the appetite. Some very small towns, very rich towns in Connecticut have no debt. They pay everything in cash, because they're able to collect enough revenue for the services that they want. And that's why you look, yeah, Chris?
Is that because some of those towns have a plan in place where they're setting the... Is that because some of those towns have a plan in place where they're setting aside a certain percent of a mill or mill rate to refund some of those services?
It's possible, Chris. It's also possible that, you know, Portland's grant list is a little over eight hundred thousand dollars. You know, for a mill, for, for, for a mill. Help me out here, Tom.
Per.
For, for the, right? Okay. Now, you could have a two billion dollar grant list. A three billion dollar grant list, Waterford, for example, they have Millstone. Millstone is a huge number on their grant list. So their mill rate is going to be very low. Their ability to pay is very different than, let's say, Portland's grant list. Because we don't have as much of a grant list that they do. You look at Greenwich's grant list, I don't know what their grant list is, but you look at some of the houses that they have, as well as some of the industries that they have. So it, it's not only setting aside money, but it is your ability to pay and the grant list that you have in your town, as well as the expenses that you have. And the ability for people to tolerate various mill rates. I think Essex's mill rate is, is pretty low. But when you look at the value of the homes, you look at the value of some of the properties they have, it's very different than properties that may be here. A lot of the shoreline towns, they have million, multimillion-dollar homes that demand very little service. They're very often people that don't live there, but they own second homes or something of that nature. So, you know, grant lists are very interesting. The whole way of taxation in Connecticut is very interesting. And CCM is looking at this, our lobbying organization, and we're trying to say, is there a better way for Connecticut in general as to how we fund the services and the things that we do? I don't know that anybody has it all figured out. I don't know that they've even really analyzed all the various taxes and fees that the state has and that local municipalities collect on behalf of the state. Ryan Curley collects fees every day, a large portion of which goes back to the state of Connecticut. Only a small amount stays in his office and goes up to Tom's office, so.
You know, it's, it's a reminder too that as a, as a Board of Selectmen, we should probably do everything we can to get additional business in town and develop the properties we have, so.
Yep, and nurture the ones that are here.
Absolutely.
I love business.
Yeah. I heard there's a big property in town that's just ripe for development.
Yeah, with no revenue.
Taxed.